Welcome everyone, I would like to call the Williamsburg Independent Board of Education meeting to order. Roger Faulner will do the roll call, Kim Williams the pledge of allegiance, and Donnie Patrick the moment of silence.
Kim what?
Here.
Kim Williams?
Here.
Donnie Patrick?
Here.
Alan Staley?
Roger Faulner, here.
If everyone will rise for the pledge of allegiance, and the flag is over to my left and your right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing just for a moment of silence, please. Thank you, may be seated.
In setting the final meeting agenda, we do not have any additions or deletions.
We do have one.
Oh, we do?
Yes.
Have one addition.
Yes. Actually, this summer when we got our board policies and our revisions that were suggested by KSBA, we now have to have, I guess, permission from the board to be able to use any outside agency for moral instruction. And so, it's per KRS 158.200, so I'd like to add that action item to the agenda.
Okay, well, we move on to the approval of today's board meeting agenda. I need a motion to approve today's agenda.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, like sign. The motion is approved. Recognitions and resolutions, which includes going the extra mile award, student recognition, and special recognition.
Okay, we have lots of celebrations tonight, and so, these are our favorite kind of board meetings. We do, the way we work, if you have not ever seen this before, one of the things that we, that I really love, and it started way before I got here, is going the extra mile awards. And so, those are nominated by staff for staff, and sometimes by students for staff. And so, we've even had parents nominate teachers for going the extra mile. And so, part of that process is they submit a written narrative about that person and why they deserve it. So, I'm gonna read our very first one. I don't think it's any surprise to anybody, but we would like to celebrate Mr. Dirk Berta. And so, someone wrote about Mr. Berta and said, "Mr. Dirk Berta is an outstanding example of dedication and heart. He consistently goes above and beyond for our students and colleagues alike. His positive attitude, strong work ethic, and willingness to do whatever it takes truly sets him apart. Whether he's finding creative ways to support student success, lending a hand to a teammate, or stepping up wherever help is needed, Mr. Berta always goes the extra mile for everyone. His commitment to our school community inspires us all, and we are so grateful for everything he does to make a difference." Now, I bet most of you, if you know him, thought I was gonna brag on him for being the 13th region coach of the year. But, but, he's so much more than that. And speaking as a mom of one of his players, Coach Berta does exactly what is expected of him, and more, all the time. And my daughter loves volleyball because of Coach Berta. So, Zim, why don't you come help me give his award?
Yeah, let's take a picture back here. And I don't really need a microphone. Do you want me to wear it? Okay, the next one, I don't know how we landed this lady, but she does more, I did not write this, but I do have to just go ahead and say, she does more with grace and positivity than I could ever imagine. Actually, last year she was our teacher of the year. So, someone wrote about Ms. Susanna Rice. "Ms. Susanna Rice goes above and beyond every day to make a difference in students' lives. She not only teaches her education pathway classes with passion and purpose, preparing the next generation of educators, but also leaves engaging STEAM classes at the elementary level, sparking creativity and curiosity in young learners. On top of her already full plate, she has graciously taken on additional responsibilities of directing the school choir and organizing the second grade Angel Play, which by the way, isn't this what year of the, the 30th year of the Angel Play? So, Ms. Rice has taken that on, and it's an undertaking. Ensuring that the tradition continues to bring joy to students, families, and community. Her dedication, organization, and heart for students shine through in everything she does. Whether she's inspiring future teachers, building confidence through performance, or encouraging hands-on exploration and STEAM, Susanna embodies what it means to go the extra mile for the Jacket family. But, we appreciate you." Nobody knows how hard that really is, do they? They don't understand.
Susanna, what are the dates of the play?
The play is December 15th.
15.
Yeah, that's ridiculous.
Thank you.
Okay, the other person, I'm gonna actually have Zayden come up and kinda help me with this one, because this person has already made a big impact. Laila, come on, come help too. Yes. Okay, this lady has changed so many lives, from the very youngest, and now, this guy is a senior, and now she's changing lives all the way to senior year. So, Ms. Robin Root has been here long before I was, and someone wrote this about you, Ms. Root. I would write something too, but I wanted you to hear from your peers. "Ms. Robin Root consistently goes above and beyond to create meaningful, engaging learning experiences for her preschool students. Her classroom is full of curiosity, creativity, and joy. Whether students are going on a leaf hunt, adopting a goose, or exploring their senses with a pumpkin, each student leaves her room at the end of the day feeling safe, loved, and valued because of her patience and care. What sets her apart even more is her selflessness and dedication beyond the classroom. Instead of using her planning period for preparation or paperwork, she devotes that time to teaching our theater class. Through her extra effort, students across the school gain opportunities to build confidence, express themselves, and collaborate with others. Ms. Root is an inspiring, selfless educator whose dedication leaves a lasting impact on everyone around her. She truly goes the extra mile every single day. I couldn't agree more."
I wanna just thank Ms. Root for taking on our theater class, because it's, we don't know a lot, but she's definitely working with us, and it's been a great time. So, I've had a lot of fun.
It takes a lot of work. Make sure you guys get down there and get a picture, too. Okay, this next one's kind of wrong, and I think it's warranted. This person is an example in our building, a quiet confidence, she's a behind-the-scenes worker that does so many things for our kids. And when I think about going the extra mile, I always think about someone who is, who is working behind the scenes, don't always want the accolades, but their efforts are not behind the scenes. It's very obvious that their work matters. And so, this next one, I don't know who wrote this, Ms. Shawna maybe can tell me later, but whoever it is, is a very heartfelt writer who truly cares about Ms. Amber Ellis. "I wanted to nominate Ms. Amber Ellis for recognition, for always going the extra mile. She consistently goes above and beyond in her daily work, demonstrating exceptional dedication, compassion, and professionalism in all aspects of her role. Amber approaches each day with enthusiasm and a genuine heartfelt love for children. She builds strong, trusting relationships with every student, meeting each child's individual needs with patience, empathy, and creativity. Whether she is helping a child navigate big emotions, supporting a student's learning goals, or celebrating small successes, her calm and caring presence makes every child feel valued and understood. Amber goes the extra mile to support our families. She takes time to communicate with parents, share positive moments, and ensure they feel connected and informed about their child's growth and progress. Her kindness and professionalism help build a strong sense of community between home and school. In addition to her work with students and families, Amber is a true team player. She is always willing to lend a hand, offer thoughtful ideas, and support her colleagues with a positive attitude. Her initiative, reliability, and collaborative spirit help create a classroom environment where both children and staff thrive. Amber exemplifies what it means to be a dedicated early childhood professional. Her commitment to excellence, her nurturing nature, and her unwavering support for students, families, and teammates make her an invaluable part of our preschool program." Carl Holmes has written, "And then some. These three little words are the secret to success. They are the difference between average people and most companies. These people always do what is expected. And then some. They are thoughtful of others. They are considerate and kind. And then some. They meet their obligations and responsibilities fairly and squarely. And then some. They are good friends and helpful neighbors. And then some. They can be counted on in an emergency. And then some. I'm thankful for people like this, for they make the world more livable. Their spirit of service is summed up in three little words. And then some. We appreciate that." I do have to tell one other story. Ms. Amber would not want the credit for this, but I'm gonna give it to her. The other day, we're walking in the hallway, and I see three-year-olds. You know, we have three-year-olds to 18-year-olds in the same building. I see these little babies walking in the hallway, they got this little furry critter in their hands, and they're talking to their critter. And I say, "What are they holding?" And Ms. Smitty, her teacher, said, "Oh, these are hallway pets. It's to save the artwork on the wall." Ms. Amber went home, after they were talking about it, and made these little crochet critters that now when you walk in our hallway and you see our kiddos, they're talking, "Stay quiet, stay quiet, stay calm, we're going to the cafeteria." And I was like, "This is genius, this is genius." So, they love their little critters, made, handmade by Ms. Amber. Okay, I'm actually going for this next one. I really think Ms. Kayla, it's for our two students that you're so proud of, our community garden. So, I, we've been wanting to celebrate you guys for the last couple of board meetings, but I want Ms. Kayla to come and kinda share a little bit about her experience with them. Oh, Zay too? Yes. Look, he's taking, he's taking. Okay, so actually, Zayden is our FFA president, and he's going to be sharing, but I'll just give a little bit of a blurb about what we have been able to do. So, as part of the Save the Children community piece, as part of Partners for Rural Impact, and both schools in our community, and a lot of other pieces, some grants, some things going together, he'll give you a little bit more info about that. We had the opportunity over the summer, bleeding into the fall a little bit, of seeing our community changed through a garden, a community garden at Mackey Avenue. And we had students at Williamsburg who were there every single time. They convinced their friends to come and help. They really took ownership, and I'm just super proud of you guys. And so, as our future former American president, Mr. Zayden Housekeeper, we'll tell you a little more.
Jeremy Lively and Malia Graham have spent the summer, as well as time before and after, working with the Mackey Community Garden. They have exhibited jacket pride and leadership skills that will serve them both immediately and in the future, in their future endeavors. This project was provided by the Strong Roots Grant in partnership with the Save the Children. Williamsburg Housing Authority, Unite UK Cooperative Extension Office, Partners of Rural Impact Full Service Community Schools, and various volunteers. These students, along with several others, were able to participate in Little Sprouts part of this, in the Little Sprouts part of the program. Jeremiah and Malia, along with their mom, took ownership of the project and checked the garden daily. They weighed the harvest, they weighed the harvest each day. Over the summer, the garden produced 213 pounds of cucumbers, 70 pounds of yellow squash, 67 pounds of zucchini, and 31 pounds of okra, 78 pounds of peppers, and 96 pounds of watermelon.
Wow. That's cute.
These students even worked to distribute produce to their communities, especially those in need who could not physically reach the garden. Jeremiah and Melina are both receiving a certificate from FFA recognizing their leadership in agriculture.
Yay.
Great job.
The future president.
All right, before I give you these plaques, what is your favorite part about working in the garden?
Picking the garden.
Oh, yeah.
Taking care of it. Well, you guys did an amazing job, and I can't wait to see what you guys do in FFA.
Yeah, that's great. And the pictures, if you didn't see the garden, the pictures of what they create, it's unbelievable. It's the tidiest garden I've ever seen, I'll tell you that.
We have one last celebration of the night, and this one's kind of a big one. I don't know, I want all of our interns come on up to the podium. Come on up to the podium. Ms. Kayla, come have a seat in the front here. So, Kayla has been our full-service, full-service coordinator through PRI, which is Partners for Rural Impact. Part of her role, which she's, she's worn many hats, but part of her role has been taking students' interest, and then connecting them to potential career options in the community. And so, tonight, Mr. Doctor Cisse, oh, sorry, it's Myla. Okay. He, he has been our partner with the Learn and Earn program. Every year, you guys sign and agree, have signed an agreement for the last couple of years to partner with Learn and Earn. And so, what he has done is basically, Kayla's been the boots on the ground, and Mr. Cisse has been the, has been the wind beneath our wings, per se. And so, but, he really wanted us to celebrate Ms. Kayla, since she's gonna be transitioning to a new role. So, I thought I could write something, but I thought it would be best if they were able to speak to you. So, do you want us to do the video first, or do you wanna do what you have to say first?
Oh, then.
You can go ahead and start.
Okay. Let me just begin to this. Okay. I just wanted to say that you have really impacted my life, you know, since you came to us in middle school, when I was in middle school. And like, you were planning college trips, and like, other events for us to do, to now, like, helping me get opportunities for work. Like, I don't think I would be where I'm at without you, because, you know, you really helped me there. And, like, I just, I don't know where I'd be, like, right now without you in my life, so.
Don't look at me, Kayla. So, for the past seven years, Kayla, it's been an honor to get to know you, truly. You've been a light in every single room, and kinda like what Ryan said, I wouldn't be the same person without you, or where I am. The first year I did the internship, I was able to stay with Shelley, and then this past summer, you're like, no, you're going out somewhere else. So, I went to the extension office, and I found something that I truly love. I really love working at the extension office. And we were talking last night about all the shenanigans that I've helped you with. So, oh man, I wish I, I don't have any more words, but I just, all the words couldn't describe how much you've helped me, truly. Thank you so much, Kayla.
Well, I'd just like to say that Ms. Kayla has been like, the big sister that I never had. Has always been there for me through everything, and I'm just really grateful for her and everything she's done for me in this school.
All right, boss. So, I started out as your intern, the first year I did Learn and Earn, and it was wild. It went from times from, I was cutting out a life-size game of life, which that, that was something interesting. And then, you definitely helped me this summer, whenever I was able to work at the vet clinic. And that's something that I will always remember, because I made so many good relationships, and I was able to learn that being a vet is really what I wanna do. And this program, and what you've instilled, and every single one of your students is great, and I hope that you can, even though you work here now, even though that's, you still work here now, I'm super glad that you're just gonna still be a part of the Jacket family. And you were always a part of the Jacket family, even though you couldn't drive a car. But now you can drive a car, so that's a good thing. So, I'm definitely glad that you're sticking around, and I just wanna thank you for definitely reminding me, hey, Zayden, your time machine is supposed to be up on this date. And so, that has definitely helped me, and so, I'm just thankful, because if I, if you weren't here, I was gonna be, have to be working at somewhere like G and E for so many months. So, I'm definitely glad that you've been able to help me out, and I know everybody here is thankful for what you've done, and thankful for what you're gonna do over there at the daycare.
For this, it's a bit lengthy, and I'm sorry, Kayla, I can't look at your husband whenever I say this, because I'm not a good public
So I started out as your intern, the first year I did Learn and Earn, and it was wild. It went from times from I was cutting out a life-size game of life, which that, that was something interesting. And then you definitely helped me this summer whenever I was able to work at the vet clinic. And that's something that I will always remember because I made so many good relationships and I was able to learn that being a vet is really what I want to do. And this program and what you've instilled in every single one of your students is great. And I hope that you can, even though you work here now, even though that's, you still work here now, I'm super glad that you're just gonna still be a part of the Jacket family. And you were always a part of the Jacket family, even though you couldn't drive a car. But now you can drive a car, so that's a good thing. So I'm definitely glad that you're sticking around and I just want to thank you for definitely reminding me, hey, Zayden, your time machine is supposed to be up on this date. And so that has definitely helped me and so I'm just thankful because if I, if you weren't here, I was gonna be, have to be working at somewhere like G and E for so many months. So I'm definitely glad that you've been able to help me out and I know everybody here is thankful for what you've done and thankful what you're gonna do over there at the daycare.
For this, it's a bit lengthy and I'm sorry, Kayla, I can't look at your husband every, I say this because I'm not a good public speaker. But my name is Maddox Johnson and I'm standing here today because of a special someone. This someone has helped me through so many rough times and stressful situations. And I know almost every other classmate of mine could say the exact same thing to her. One of the countless times she's helped us along is three dozen kids this summer were looking for a job. And not every one of those kids would have been able to get a job without her. But with her, everyone was able to get a job that she, that they loved and they absolutely like rocked that job. And I know for a fact that those kids would not have been able to get a job that they would even like and like only a fraction of them would actually be able to get a job. This special someone without a doubt is the nicest and most welcoming person you will ever meet, especially for us students. This person has helped out more kids than I even know with finding job opportunities, job placements, transportation, and even finding lifelong careers. I owe a lot to this person and with the fact that in mind, that they aren't even wanting a full 1% of what she's given us in return makes me feel incredibly guilty. So with this in mind, I would absolutely love and feel completely and utterly blessed to say thank you to Kayla Henderson.
This is my first year working for Ms. Kayla and I'm so truly honored that she has given me the opportunity. Even though I didn't work for her before, I knew who she was and I knew that whatever she did, she was gonna make an impact on this school. Some kids take her for granted, but it's high school. The kids are mean. But I always knew that Kayla had our best interests and hearts and even if we don't want to listen to her, she always knew what was best. Ms. Kayla has truly changed my life and given me the chance to do something that I truly love, which is to be helpful with children. So I'm really grateful for you.
Hey, Donna. Um, yeah, go ahead and play it.
Kayla, just wanted to let you know how much I've enjoyed working with you over the years. Even when you were in AmeriCorps at Corbin and then when you were here with Kirap and then Viora, you've always given 110% at everything you do. And it makes a big difference having people to work with that are like-minded. Um, I'm looking forward to seeing you in your new role as the childcare provider director. And I know that you're gonna be awesome at that, just like everything else you've done. Good luck.
Just wanted to say thank you, Kayla, for all your help throughout the years. Um, you have been instrumental in making our students successful. You're always there, you step up, um, no matter what the need may be with our students. Um, and you always put them first. So we are so appreciative and so lucky to have you as part of our family here at Williamsburg. And even though you're changing roles, um, we're glad that we will still have you around. Um, I'm always excited when we have gotten to work together in the past because no matter how crazy the idea or how outlandish or big it is, um, you always say yes and we always make it happen somehow. So I'm appreciative of that and, and thankful for you. Most of all, thankful that, um, you love and care about our students. So thank you for everything.
Thank you for everything and also make good decisions, or is it good choices? Whatever Kayla says.
Thank you, Kayla.
Thank you, Ms. Kayla.
Hey, Kayla, thank you for giving me the opportunity to work at this school and learn new things through the vet department.
Hey, Ms. Kayla, from selling me your car to get me multiple jobs, you've helped me out a lot. You know, you've been one of the most impactful people at the school this year. And, uh, I've really enjoyed working with you. I'm excited to see how well you run the daycare. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kayla, for all the opportunities you've given us and to be the friendly place for us.
Hey, boss, thanks for helping me these last two years and thank you for always being on our side and being our third new mother.
Hey, Kayla, thank you for all that you've done for our students. We can't wait to see you excel in this new role.
Thank you, Ms. Kayla, for all the amazing opportunities you've given us.
Thank you, Kayla.
Thank you, Ms. Kayla.
Herman, why don't you guys come up and get, and Rebecca, why don't you give her her, her certificate? So I would love for Mr. Sissé to come up and kind of share about our intern program and just how, how you've seen it impact the community. Yeah, he's making you guys talk. He can talk.
Yeah, I can talk. Uh, my name is Ismael Sissé. I'm the project director for the Learn and Earn grant with PRI. And I wanted to come up here and say Kayla also changed my life, just like she did with everybody else. We all understand that our young people, these young people that we just saw here and a lot more that I've heard, all need the experience of knowing what it takes to succeed as in a career. We also know that it wouldn't hurt for them to earn some money and also learn some soft skills. When I got this job, I thought that it was going to be very difficult to do. But I was blessed. I was fortunate enough to meet Ms. Housekeeper Tabitha the first week that I got this job. And she seemed to be just as crazy as I was, as far as wanting to be as creative, as flexible as can be. And then she introduced me to Kayla, who was even crazier than we were in her.
I like that. I like that you were crazier than me. That makes me feel better.
In, in her desire to do whatever it takes to help these kids. So long story short, you, you already know how Kayla, how great Kayla is. I don't need to go into that. You've already heard from the interns that she works with. But to make a long story short, because of the successes that we have had here, I'm able to replicate this sort of successes in a lot of different counties, eight different counties. And this is what I call my pilot. This is what I call my, my exemplar. Whatever we do here, I try to take it somewhere else. I have a grant that had enough money to give us 50 interns every year. But because of Kayla's relentless desire to make sure that we get as many opportunities as possible, just at Williamsburg, we were able to get almost 200 internships. That's because she puts the work in, she uses some of our funds, we collaborate, we do everything we can and we never take no for an answer. And that is why we're able to do all these things. And for the last two years, we've had so many interns come through and hopefully we'll even have some more. Uh, what I would like you, the board, to know when you sign off on these MOUs, which another one is coming for next year, is that if you zoom out and think of what these interns are doing, it's just more than just being an intern. They are being positive contributors to these communities. They are being paid and their paychecks are being taxed. The community is benefiting from that. I have a story that I shared at the end of the summer. I think it was Jared. One of the interns was working here in one of these, uh, auto body shops, uh, mechanic shops.
Yep.
I got a call from the manager because Kayla was out having fun somewhere and on a cruise or something, I think. So I followed up and I spoke to the manager and I said, I'm, I work with Kayla. Is there, is there an issue? I thought maybe that was an accident or something like that. She said, no, we just wanted to know how long, I think it was Jared, if I'm not mistaken.
It is Jared. Yeah.
How long Jared was going to work with us? I'm like, well, uh, how long do you need him to work? I mean, after, after, when school starts, he has to go back to school. Say, well, we want to know because we want to know when we can give our other employees vacation time. So Jared doesn't notice, but if you think about it, because of his presence at that shop, two, three other families were able to have some time off. A father is able to take a kid fishing because now he doesn't have to go to work because Jared is there. Or somebody is able to go spend some time with their family because Jared is there. So apart from all the other things that they contribute, just the fact that they are participating in the community really helps. And of course we have, we do some other fun stuff that, uh, they, they might be able to tell you about. But just wanted to highlight that as the importance of internships. These kids get to know and understand what it means to be a positive member of the community. That's what I wanted to share.
That's great.
I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Do you guys have any questions about how it works?
All right. Thank you.
Approval of the regular scheduled October 21st for meeting minutes. I need a motion to approve this, the meeting minutes.
Most.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, like sign. The motion is approved. Next up, our superintendent's report.
Okay. Um, the very first thing that we track every month is that our goal is to stay above 97% average daily attendance for our staff. And this month, we've had a few little hiccups and actually made it hard to figure out how to calculate because we've had a couple of situations that were, were definitely not planned. We had a staff member who had a car accident. He's doing great. I'm so excited. I hope he's watching this board, board meeting because he's doing great. He's at home. But that definitely fed into that. We did not stay above the 97% ADA for the month, for, from last board meeting. We did not stay above that. But that's okay. We know why. Okay, the next thing that I'll share is our student learning update. Um, one of the things I know I met with two of you guys yesterday, we, I'm very pleased to say that I feel the train moving forward. We've got some great structures in place. We meet every Monday with our student learning team meeting where we review data. We, we, I mean, we really review the data and we pour over it and we come up with solutions. But one of the things that I'm super thankful for is last Friday, we had a data review day. And we've had great response from that. Um, all of our staff stayed and worked on Friday. We let them go a little bit early to be able to make it to the football game if they were gonna make it go to playoffs. But in that time, we had teachers really dive deep into our data. And when I say our data, it wasn't just assessment data, it was looking at behavior referral data, attendance data, and just kind of get an idea of what kinds of things are happening as a whole. And we tracked that not just this year, but over the last three years. And I, I feel like there's some huge celebrations there. I would like for you to, to hear. Um, and I give a lot of credit to Brian Berta. He's our DPP. Spent a lot of time working on making sure our students are coming to school and that if, if something's going on, he contacts me and he says, hey, looks like attendance is getting low. I don't know if it's a sickness. He talks to Day Spring. I mean, we're always communicating about it, but I feel like the board needs to hear this. So the average daily attendance in 22, 23 for the whole district was 88.73%. Now remember, this is what determines our funding. In 23, 24, our average daily attendance was 89.9. In 24, 25, our ADA was 91.09%. And from the beginning of this year until now, our students, our ADA for students is 94.3. So we're seeing a huge increase in getting kids here, making them want to be here. And I have to also say, going back to that student learning piece, we believe, our admin team believes, that engaging students in vibrant learning is what gets them here. If they're excited about what they're doing, if their teachers are excited about what they're teaching, that makes kids want to be here. But also you just saw firsthand relationships. You saw what relationships with kids does. It makes them want to come to school. And also you got a few boomerangs in the room. It also makes them not want to leave school, right? It makes you, if you've got relationships, you don't want to leave. And so that's what I am trying to do here. Is create a culture where they know our DPP loves them, our principal loves them, their APs love them, and we'll do whatever it takes to get them here. And so I feel like just as our ADA is on an upswing, we're gonna start seeing our learning become more of an upswing. I really believe that. Um, and then I kind of wanted Ms. Parton to talk about what, we talked about communication plan for a board goal. And I'd like Ms. Parton to talk about what are we doing and how have you led the work on the expectations? Using the feedback from our, from our staff. You didn't have to have anything prepared. I just want them to hear it from you.
So I don't need a microphone either. I think, I think everyone can hear me. But I gave you guys a binder and really in December, in the December meeting, we'll dig into this a little bit more because I also wanted to have all of the assistant principals here with me to discuss our expectations because there are some things that are different from level to level here. And so as the building principal, there are some expectations that we have after digging into the data that apply to everyone. And so really on Friday, that's what we took time to do. We took time for our teachers to be able to look at the data, give us their solutions, and also give them our responses to that data. And so we were able to really just have some time to have face-to-face conversations with teachers about what we expect moving forward and also our response, like I said, to what we were seeing in that data. So I want you to take some time and look over those expectations and please, any questions that you have, anything that you've come up with that you're like, what do you, what did you mean by this? Like what are teachers actually doing here? Hopefully we will be able, and we will give you more answers in December, but anything in the meantime, please reach out to me and I'll be happy to sit down and we can talk about it anytime.
I'm excited to hear your feedback on this. And then my last thing is I'm gonna have, um, Mr. Berta talk about where we're at with the calendar committee. You know, this is, we're about that time of the year, so he can kind of give you where he's at with that, how he's formed the committee, and then what you can expect to see in the upcoming meetings.
I, I think it's obvious. I don't need a microphone either, so I'm just gonna stand back here and talk to the motion. Uh, right now, we're looking at December 4th to be our first calendar committee meeting. I've just sent an email to all, all of the community, or the committee members. We've got an elementary teacher, a middle and high school representative, we have a board member representative. We've got two classified staff representatives. We've got a principal, uh, myself, superintendent. One, um, doctor in the area that lives in the district. And then we also have a new business owner. Just opened, opened up a business that's gonna be starting on the, on the committee. So we're looking at, uh, we've got two different calendars right now. Like I said, these, these are just planning stages. One is the variable calendar. One is the variable calendar, by instructional hours instead of days. And then another one is, um, by instructional days instead of hours, and that's looking at a nine, nine-week stint, two-week deal there. So I'm kinda excited to see what the calendar, what the committee, uh, looks at, and what that kind of calendar looks like.
Okay.
That's it.
I don't see our WEA representative.
Nope.
Alright, uh, persons, uh, requesting to address the board, each person wishing to address the board of education may do so at this time.
Do you wanna release the students for that one?
Yes, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the consent and action items of the agenda. Everyone is welcome to stay, but if not, uh, you, you can exit at this time, and thank you for coming.
Thank you, interns, for being here. Appreciate it.
Hey, man, turns, talking about getting them ready for the real world, that's good. Hey, Berta, how's our enrollment?
We've actually, we've had several enrollments over the last couple of days, a couple of weeks, actually. We had like four last week, uh, of course, you got music group here and there.
Yeah, you do, that's, that's important.
We've got, we've had a few, uh, we've lost, I can get it real quick, I don't know what it was this morning. I actually had enrolled yesterday, so things are going well. Did have a couple of the, um...
We find out why they left?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
We ready?
We're ready.
Okay, there you go.
Move on to our action agenda. Approval of revisions to the twenty-five, twenty-six student handbook.
So if you want me to kinda go over what those revisions are, um, I, it's attached in our agenda, but there are a couple of just things that we did not, that we didn't catch when we first had you guys approve it. So it didn't need a second reading, it just is basically revisions. And it, I think the first one starts on page twenty-one. And it was all about field trips. So Ms., Ms. Parton has a great process where, um, because feeding into our chronic absenteeism, people automatically think of low attendance as being truancy. Well, every absence that a student takes, let's use my son as an example, he missed five days of school for national FFA band. That pours into the percentage of chronic absenteeism, because there, that's five days they're missing instruction. So we created, as a response to that KRS, we were, we created a process where before a student goes on a field trip, and you know that is, my heart and soul is given these vibrant learning experiences, but also trying to keep a balance of not letting every kid be out of the building all the time, if they're involved in everything. So we created a process where teachers sign off on students, basically, just like a parent has to get permission, teachers are giving permission, okay? And one of the things that kinda fell by, you know, we kind of struggled with, was, um, we wanna change it to students cannot have more than one failing grade, 'cause it initially said they have to be passing four.
Four in six classes.
Four out of six classes. And so now, we're feeling like, as a response to our student learning, we're tightening up the ship a little bit. While we still want them to have these experiences, we want a little bit more rigorous expectation. And so we minimized it from basically two failing classes to one. That's what our proposal is. And then, um, students must have a permission slip signed by a parent, guardian, and by the teacher on the student's class schedule, indicating that they agree to the student going on the trip. So it can't just be any teacher, it has to be teachers that they have in class during that period when the, when the, um, field trip is happening. So that's our proposal for that. And then, on the other one, do you have a question?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
What would justify a teacher not allowing, not signing? I mean, because we're not defining it there, so...
For example, if they had, like, a big project that they'd been working on, and they had a really good presentation that day, and they really didn't happen to miss out on it, they had been working in a group for this, and they were the only person not going to be there in that group. That would kinda be the scenario of, if that teacher didn't sign, then that would raise a red flag for us to go and have a conversation with that teacher of, okay, can you tell me exactly what's going on here? Because if it is that, that they have more than one failing grade, maybe if that is the failing grade. Like, maybe if that teacher's class, that is the failing grade, and they're like, well, if they missed this big thing, and they're already failing, then they are just kind of being able to plead their case as to why they didn't think that they should go. Now, ultimately, it would come down to what exactly is the kid getting out of this field trip? Like, what type of field trip is this? Is this a competition where it's part of their pathway, where it's important for them to be there and important for them to go? Or is this kid doing this presentation and bringing up their grade, and this class more important than whether they're getting out of this field trip? And that would kinda be the scenario that we have to weigh out as an admin to make this happen.
Okay, so is there need for more clarification, maybe that, in addition to a consult with an admin team or something? I guess I just, it, it kinda bothers me a little bit that we're just, I don't wanna say just giving teachers, but we're, we're letting one person potentially keep a student from a learning activity. Right. So that's, I, I guess, all I'm thinking about is the mechanics, the true day-to-day. It's gonna get muddy on you, if you don't have something.
And I will be honest, I, I ran into this situation twice before, where a teacher, you know, didn't want a student to go simply because they were failing that class, and they thought that missing would put them further down. And that was a situation where we did exactly what I said, we had to weigh out, okay, well, what type of field trip is this where they're getting out of it? And so I get what you're saying, maybe we need to add a statement in there about, you know, just admin, something along those lines, like, add a confirmation.
I'm just thinking in terms of, you may get yourself in some muddy waters, if you don't. But now, I don't know how everybody else feels.
I'm not, I don't wanna overstep, we speak out of context, but there's been several times where Ms. Parton and Mrs. Winchester and myself have come together to make some decisions there, based on attendance, behavior, grades, all of these different things, and the context of the field trip, um, and for the better of the students.
Well, then maybe you just need to say something to the effect of, with consultation with the admin sta- staff or something. I don't, I just want to, all I can see is a parent coming in here, and you guys not having a leg to stand on, other than one staff person's, it's up to, I, I'm not, I mean, I don't, I don't know how the others feel. I'm just trying to, uh, point out that I don't want it to be muddy.
Better to have a committee make a decision.
I really, I really think...
Yeah, in the event, in the event that somebody doesn't authorize a student to go, and they, and honestly, Mrs. Parton does really well with making sure that before something gets into the teacher's hands, that these students meet the requirements to go.
Yeah.
Just to be honest. And so one of the things that she'll do is, is we'll get a li- she'll get a list of the students who are going on a trip, she'll see if they meet the requirements based on attendance and grades. And then, it's really more, after that, that's when the students kinda get their, their permission slip to say, hey, you know, it's more of a courtesy of the, to the teacher, like, hey, I'm gonna be missing, you know, is it okay if I miss your class? You know, I'm doing well, kinda thing. Um, and so she always double checks, I'm sorry, I mean, I was saying, but she always double checks, um, before they even get the permission form, to make sure that they meet the requirements to go.
Well, I think in practice, you're doing this.
Yeah.
I, I just want to
In writing.
Have it in writing, mainly to protect the school.
Yeah, I think it's wise. Well, I propose then, we just table this for tonight's meeting, and then bring this back with the revision, um, at the next meeting, um, in December, with just the revision of the writing of it. Does that sound good?
Yeah, more, like I said, more of a protection of our, our teacher, frankly. And then, you as an admin team have a leg to stand on, when you've got a hot parent standing in your office. And, and understandably, I mean, I, I'm okay with that. You know, it's, a parent wants a child to go, exactly. But at the same time, we need to advocate for, we're, we're teaching students, and they need responsibility. And this, they knew that this was one of the responsibilities, so.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, there's others that, I think there were other things on there.
Um, we can vote to a table, but you wanna hear the other revisions? Cause then you guys have time to re- to review it. Okay, on page twenty-eight, one of the things that has been a consistent problem brought to me, and not just brought to me by administrators or teachers, but also, I've been stopped by parents who have asked me to do something about the fact that we have students bringing blankets into school. And so at first, I didn't understand, so what do you mean, bringing blankets in? And, and truly wearing blankets as part of their wardrobe? And, um, you know, I, I always try to really think through these processes, but I've asked for, for clarification of why this is a concern. Number one, it's a concern because it's a safety concern. It could absolutely be concealing. Um, but also, I wanna say for the vitality of our students, we want them to be vibrant, that we want them to be able to be awake. And if they're too cozy and comfy in their blankets, then that, that doesn't help us provide instruction in a, you know, a culture for learning, it doesn't do that. But also, it's a distraction in the classroom. And, um, when you are in a building with three-year-olds to eighteen-year-olds, we can't have eighteen-year-olds dragging around blankets when we're trying to train our three and four-year-olds not to bring in blankets. So there's multiple reasons for that, and so we felt like, well, we can't really enforce that until it's in our handbook, and we can't expect parents or students to know about it until it's in our handbook. So that is the second proposed change. And then, the, were there three, Ms. Parton? Yeah, okay. Okay. Do you wanna talk about that, because you know much more about that than me. This is about skipping class.
So originally, our consequences for skipping class read along the same lines for those as disruption and disrespect. And so the first offense was a warning, the second offense was a conference with a team of teachers, and the third offense being an after-school detention. However, skipping is kind of in its own category because it's also a safety concern. That's why it's different than disruption and disrespect. Now, disruption can turn into a safety concern, and we've seen that, but skipping, if we don't know where a student is, it's a problem, and it's a major problem. And so with that, we thought that those consequences were a little bit too lax. And so they just get the one warning and conference, and then, an after-school detention is the proposed change. And then, at, so the point of emphasis of the same.
Any questions on that?
I just question, would we be able to approve the other two?
We could just
Or we just?
We could just table it all, but it also gives you a chance to read through, yeah.
Alright, I didn't wanna hold up the whole process if we needed to do something different.
Well, it's kinda like what you said, um, we're already in practice of these things, and because safety is our number one. And when we can't find a student, if you wanna see this team right here run around like crazy, it's when we don't know where a student is. Because that is our number one concern. And it could be as simple as they're in the library, and they forgot to tell their teacher, and then we just discover them and say, oh, okay, thankfully, you're there, make sure you tell your teacher. But we wanna make sure for, that there's no abusing that situation, so, and that they're safe. So I think we could bring them all back, but I mean, I don't see why not, that you could say, go ahead with these, if you want to.
Whichever you feel most comfortable with, Ms. Parton, cause I, I just...
I would like for us to go ahead and approve the other two if possible.
Okay.
Okay. And I'll make sure it's noted in the minutes, that that's how it's happening.
Then I'll make the motion to approve the other two, and then just that you guys come back to us on the one, just a few, very clarifications.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, like sign, the motion is approved. The addition that we had.
Okay, so, um, like I said, per KRS one-five-eight dot two-zero-zero. Now, this is something that you guys have been allowing a long time, and I know that, because when I was a mom and I was not working here, I was so excited that my daughter would come home and say, Mom, I'm lea- I have break tomorrow. Well, um, if you don't know what a break is, it's where our students are, they are provided, all students are provided an opportunity to attend an hour, up to an hour, a week of, or a month of moral instruction. And we have partnered with Main Street Baptist Church in this since I've been here, and even before. And so now, the state is just, because now they're allowed, here's what the KRS states. Local boards of education shall allow pupils to be excused for up to one hour on no more than one day each week, which shall include time attributed to travel to and from, to attend a district-approved request for moral instruction offering upon receiving the consent of the pupil's parent or guardian. And so because that's now allowable as an excused absence, we have to have board approval with our partners in that. Now, lucky for us, we don't have to waste any time and travel, they just walk right across the street if they have parent permission. So we, our students are not rece- typically, they're not getting one hour, but also, if a student comes to us and they want to go somewhere else for moral instruction, up, up to one hour a week, we will bring that to you, just like we are this one, and then we will document it in Infinite Campus. I've already put that Main Street is one of ours in there, and then tonight's date will be added as approval, if you approve it. So any other moral instruction partners that we have have to be included in our Infinite Campus database, and they have to be board-approved. So I am asking that we approve Main Street Baptist Church as a, a partner in our moral instruction process.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, anyone opposed, like sign, the motion is approved. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Approval of the monthly financial report, treasurer's report, monthly balance sheet, October monthly bills, and fundraiser requests. Are there any questions? Do I need a motion to approve these mentioned items?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, like sign, the motion is approved. Okay, committee reports, we've ha- we will have, is Dalton here?
Nope.
Okay. Carrie's gonna take care of it first.
Alright.
Dalton is not here, he is at home with his little boy. Um, so I'm going to be a fill-in tonight for taxes. So it looks like for this month, we collected a hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents in exonerations, there was fourteen thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy-two cents, and we have collected a total of two hundred and seventy-six taxes. Then I'm gonna go to mine. Okay, so for new hires, we have Savannah Brooks as a substitute, Savannah Sam's substitute, Abby Manholland substitute, Selena Mattingly substitute, Kayla Henderson, daycare director. Um, and then we have on FMLA Dalton Sizemore, finance officer.
Thank you, Carrie. Are there any additional comments?
I'd like to make one, um, just for the board and the community to know. Ms. White and I had a, um, discussion, the, I guess it was yesterday, uh, when we met with... with Ms. Housekeeper regarding the admin building. And, um, Mr. Abbott, uh, talked to us about it. There's very few things, frankly, that need to, uh, be completed before our administrators can move. However, um, we did agree on a date of January fifteenth. We're hoping that they can move in at that point. He, uh, one of the, his concerns, which rightfully so, is that if, if we have any unforeseen things happen in this main building that would take up his time, then he might not be able to hit that target date. However, we are really crossing our fingers and hoping that we can get our administrators into their new facility by mid-January. So that was good news, and we're very appreciative to him for, for, because I did express to him also, and Ms. White did too, that, um, we are really getting a lot of compliments on, um, this building, and the cleanliness and, um, just the maintenance of it. And so we're, we're understanding of this, but we are anxious also for our administrators to be able to, uh, have their own spaces, because I think that will allow them to, uh, work far more efficiently.
No question.
I just thought you might want to know.
We're now backstage, backstage left.
Thank you, Kim. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed like sign, the motion is approved and the meeting is adjourned.